Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, November fourteenth, 2023, meeting of the Norwood Board of Selectmen. Tonight's meeting is being held in hybrid format and broadcast on NCM. As always, we will start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay. Some of us are coming off a late night with town meeting, night one. It was eventful, a lot of good things were accomplished, and night two will be Thursday at seven thirty PM. So just for those of you at home, normally we start at six thirty, but we made a concession to make sure that people that have parent-teacher conferences at the high school are able to make it on time. So town meeting, night two, seven thirty on Thursday night. That being said, we'll start with the agenda. Item number one, warrant signature update, submitting notification of reviewed and approved warrant reports signed by the board's representative.
Motion to file?
Motion to file made by Mr. Plasko, seconded by Mr. Sad. All those in favor?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye unanimous. Item number two, meeting minutes for approval of the board submitting meeting minutes for October twenty-fourth, 2023.
Motion to approve with the correction I submitted earlier.
Motion to approve, noting the correction made by Mr. Plasko. Motion made, seconded by Mr. Donnelly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous. We have a few appointments, but we can knock off maybe a couple items first. Let's see, I'm gonna skip over to four point four first, because I think four point one through four point three, we could have a discussion on four point four. One-day liquor permit request, Modern Eyes, submitting requests for a one-day liquor permit for an event at Modern Eyes LLC at six ninety-six Washington Street on Friday, December first, for an artist's open house from six PM to eight PM. Pleasure of the board.
Did you just read the change?
Yeah, okay.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve made by Mr. Sad and seconded by Ms. Grow. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous. Item four point five, one-day liquor permit request, Norwood Portuguese Club, submitting requests for a one-day liquor permit for an event at the Norwood Portuguese Club for a wedding on November twenty-fourth, 2023, from six PM until one AM, with under ninety guests expected.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion approved made by Ms. Grow, seconded by Mr. Plasko. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous. I think we can probably get one more in. Item four point six, town common request, South Norwood Committee, Olga, so Morse House request, so I think that's just a misprint. On behalf of the South Norwood Committee, submitting a request to hold a holiday gathering at the Morse House on Thursday, December fourteenth, 2023, from three thirty PM until seven thirty PM, with approximately thirty-five guests expected.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Mr. Sad. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous. Great. That brings us to our first appointment. We have Chief Brooks of the Norwood Police Department and Chief Bailey of the Norwood Fire Department presenting their regular update.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. I agree when I think the police department is going to go first.
That sounds great. You've got more, so.
If that's okay, so I'm just gonna let Officer Johnson and Officer Garzinski take a seat here. They're our newest graduates.
Great.
The purpose of our parents, at least in the beginning, is to just introduce them to the board, and by means of that, to introduce them to the people at home who haven't seen them yet. A little different here is that we had our first Police Academy graduation at Norwood High on October twenty-seventh. You may have seen that on NCM. So these folks are both graduates of Norwood High, so I told them that I graduated from at Norwood High School now twice. But they're our newest members, they're on field training, and joining us are Officer Marchand and Officer Wong, who are the field training officers who are doing the break-in. And quite frankly, we're just talking about a much more important part of all of this, I think, than the baseline they get at the academies, actually getting broken into Norwood, Norwood Police Department and how we operate. So I just had them take seats in case you wanna ask them questions or have anything to say, and once we're all done with them, we're gonna get them back on the road, so.
This is great. Thank you, Chief. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is excellent. I'll open it up to the board to ask questions. If you'd like to introduce yourselves and maybe talk about your journey and how you got here, that'd be great.
Yeah, absolutely. So I'm Ryan Johnson, class of twenty seventeen at Norwood. I attended Massachusetts Maritime Academy directly after. I majored in emergency management and minored in homeland security. After that, I worked at National Grid for a few years, but my heart always weighed with law enforcement, so I decided to take the test. Chief Brooks hired me, and here we are.
Excellent. Good, great.
Hi, I'm Bryn Garzinski. I'm also a twenty nineteen high school, Norwood High School graduate. I went to Southern Hampshire University, where I majored in criminal justice and a minor in psychology. I was also a student athlete at the university, I played softball. And then after that, I graduated. I've always wanted to be a police officer, I'd gone to the process pretty early, and then I got hired, and I'm very grateful to be working in the town that I grew up in.
Excellent, great. Well, again, congratulations. Thank you for being here. Any questions, comments from the board? Mr. Sad?
I wanna thank my two star athletes. Chief, I told you, just keep hiring my athletes. Ryan, I've coached him since the eighth grade football, and all the Garzinskis, Andy and the whole gang, and I wanna welcome you to the Norwood Force and congratulations and keep up the great work, and even those two studs over here, I wanna thank you for all coming, it was good to have you onboard, and you're gonna love Norwood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sad knows everyone.
He does.
And I'd also just like to also echo a warm welcome, and we're really great, really excited to have you, and just really great to see you come in and say hello tonight. You know, this is a great way to continue to reach out and meet the community, so I know the chief does a great job with outreach with residents, so I expect to see that continue with you all, so welcome aboard.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Plasko?
I would first like to speak to these gentlemen.
Yes.
Did Chief make a good choice?
So far, so good. I believe so. It's the second weekend, so.
Well, with that in doors, I'd like to welcome you, which is the best, nothing but a safe career and a prosperous one. Thank you for joining our group. We have a great group down there, and hope you keep up that tradition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Donnelly?
Yes, congratulations and welcome. I don't have to tell you that you've chosen to work in a great community, given your Norwood High graduates, but you also are working for a great department, so congratulations again, and look forward to having you on our force.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
And I'll just echo the sentiments of my colleagues, and congratulations, this is great. I'm excited that Chief Brooks brought you in, it's an opportunity for the people watching at home, also to see you, and I'm sure they'll say hi on the street, and good luck, and like Mr. Plasko said, which I wish you safety and wellness for your families, so thank you very much, Chief Brooks, this is great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if there's nothing further, they have work to do, and the FTOs have work to do, so if they can be released.
Of course.
All right, well said.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. Chief Bailey didn't bring anybody.
I told them the point was for the police department to outnumber the fire department.
This will be, it can be a growing rivalry. Next time, you bring in a bunch of guys.
I don't know, I heard the fire department beat the police department recently. We're not gonna talk about that. I didn't get the memo, so. Softball game, the balls, the fire, my hats off to the fire department, Norwood Fire play, outplayed us, and they won, and we'll see them again, see them again next year.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much for being here. We know you were both at town meeting last night, and we appreciate you being there. So feel free, Chief Bailey, if you'd like to start with your update, as long or as short as you'd like.
Sure. So we've been busy in the last two months since I was in here last, continue to work on First Do, which is the software program that we got from Homeland, from ATRAC, when we made the switch over there, so that'll be recording our runs, it'll be, it does a lot of different functions for us, so we're in the implementation phase of that right now. There's nine different modules to it, we're still on.
Can you just put that on, or are you on the phone?
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
One second.
Okay. So we're still on modules one and three right now, so the scheduling module is Module Two, we're working on that, but we have to work some tweaks out with that. It's, that's a little bit more complicated than the fire prevention section, which is in three, and the NFRS, which is our incident reporting, which is in section one, so, but we're well on the way with one and three, so hoping to get that implemented and up and running by January one. We had the Norwood retreat with all of the department heads right after we met the last time, that was very informative for me and a very worthwhile event. We've been doing a lot of meetings on, every other, every Friday, gearing up for any possible new arrivals to town. I met with the League of Women Voters and did a meet and greet at their request, and had a great time. A little daunting when it's recorded, but it's the way the world is today, so I had a very informative evening with them and had some positive feedback out of that. I went to a meeting for the Regional Emergency Planning Committee. We meet a couple times a year, and it's a conglomeration of several communities. It replaces the old LEPCs that we had, the Local Emergency Planning Committees. We do it more on a regional basis, where it enables more funding to come into the group. So I went to that meeting and was also put on a committee that I wasn't anticipating, but that's the way it goes. We had Department of Fire Services, Fire Prevention Group came in to meet with myself, and I had to meet with the Fire Prevention Staff as well. That's a resource that we can use any day that we need to. There's multiple branches, but the Fire Prevention Division deals with just the fire prevention and fire prevention code, and he spent an hour with us and was very informative. This past Saturday for Veterans Day, the Honor Guard and myself, we were, and the deputy, we were all out there and participated. And we've been working with Guilfoyle doing some press releases. They're pretty generic in nature, but they're informative, they're seasonal, many of them, and we've been working with them in getting those out in a timely fashion, and they've been actually very good to work with, so, and it can entertain any questions that you may have.
Great, thank you, Chief. I'll open it up to questions or comments from the board. Ms. Grow?
Just two things. One's just a quick question on the press releases, are those like PSAs in nature, just information?
Yeah, so most of it originates from the State Biomartial's Office, and their cooking safety, there's another one that's gonna be coming out with holiday safety that I approved today. We did ones for the fire prevention week, so they're kind of, they flow throughout the year, depending on what topic is hot.
Yeah, that's great. It's kinda like on the airlines when they give you the rig and roll for safety, it's like, yeah, you might have heard it a thousand times, but for somebody, that's their first time hearing that. So might feel repetitive, but it's good to keep getting the information out there over and over. And then the second thing was just, I just wanted to come in, you did a very excellent job at the presentation at the library with the league that you mentioned earlier, so I know, like you say, the recorded events are a little tougher, but you do a really good job, and I just wanted to try and call that out.
That's great. Mr. Sad?
I just think we have to get a trip over to Rochester, Rhode Island, for Factor Mutual when they stop blowing stuff up. We gotta get on and see how they do it.
I've actually.
See it spectacular.
It is, I've been there numerous times, and it is very worthwhile to go and see.
Hopefully, next time we'll go down. I'm looking forward to that.
Mr. Plasko? We can arrange that, sir. Mr. Donnelly?
Just clarification, Guilfoyle, is that our communication?
Yeah, they're a PR crisis communication firm that we use, and part of their contract is sort of a certain number of.
Press releases in a given month when things are slow, but that's a good thing, it means we don't need them for anything overly critical, they're able to take care of some of that work for us.
Thank you. I don't have any hot topics to speak to the fire chief about, so, hot and fire chief, two things I don't wanna say, so, thank you for your report.
Mr. Donnelly is full of dad jokes, it's his forte, so. Yeah, I thank you so much again for last night, for being here tonight, we don't wanna keep you away from your family too many nights in a row, so we appreciate it. Just very quickly, if you had any tips for anyone watching at home for, as the seasons turn and it gets colder, for fire prevention in the home, if there's anything that people can be proactively doing?
Yeah, don't leave candles unattended.
Is that the biggest one?
Probably the biggest one.
Yeah.
Candle, candle safety's a big one.
Okay, great. Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Chief Brooks?
Good evening, thanks for accommodating the officers who were in for a visit before. You know, nothing crime-wise, it was astounding this month, I did attend a meeting with the Joint Terrorism Task Force, which is hosted by the FBI and the United States Attorney, and this was on the heels of what's happened involving Gaza Strip, and so they, there's a good, a good network of information that flows, and the federal government receives it, that comes through the federal government, comes to local agencies, so this was a, this was a meeting that I attended, that I thought was very fruitful. Sergeant Joseph, who kind of manages our traffic programs, got an award from AAA, which was nice, there was a luncheon in Foxborough that I attended, members of his family were able to attend, which was nice. Our training this month, we wrapped up CPR first aid in the month of October, the month, the training that's coming up this month focuses on officer wellness and courtroom testimony presented by one of our detectives, Detective Green. Speaking of Detective Green, he wrapped up a fraud investigation, which identified a woman from the south. He was able to, he was actually able to locate her, and she had issues with the courts down south as well. He had her taken into custody on our warrants in Georgia, and he and Detective Foyle flew down, took custody of her, and flew her back, and she's being held for trial here. So that was a, that was working closely with the Office of District Attorney, Mike Morrissey, to authorize the issuance of a governor's warrant if the defendant would not waive rendition, and she did waive, so it was slightly shorter process. But this was a theft of about a hundred thousand dollars from a, from a Norwood resident. Our detectives were also busy on drug cases, and they executed two search warrants in Norwood, both culminating in the arrest of a man and a woman, one on Filbert and one on Apostle Street, so they continue to do good work there on the Drug Enforcement Act. And I think that's about all I have, unless you have questions.
Great, thank you, Chief. Anything from the board?
No, I just wanna thank you for bringing those two new candidates up, and Garzinski had a batting average of about four thirty, I think, in high school. And Ryan had a mean slapshot in the backyard, so they're great, great people.
They're very good people, and you know, it doesn't always work, sometimes they're off on midnights, you know, when I'm appearing before the board, so the timing doesn't always work out, but it did tonight, that they're around, their FTOs are with them, so I was able to bring them in, and I prefer to do that, you know, just because it's nice for the public to see them and meet them and hear them, and you, and you will see them on Foot Patrol.
Yeah, that's great.
You will see them on Foot Patrol, so, but it's, yeah, so thanks for accommodating them.
A batting average is why the chief is confident he'll do better next year?
Oh, Ryan had a good batting average, he's about three forty with my kid in baseball.
Put him right out there, we don't let him think it's voluntary either, he'll be out there.
Oh yeah, now you got a good stud.
Mr. Donnelly?
And just always thank you for coming in to give us the update, we really appreciate having you, and you're doing such great work in the community, and then also thank you for highlighting our efforts to try to combat fraud in the community, so I've been really interested in getting more people talking about when these incidents happen, because there's a lot of stigma around them, if you are the victim of being defrauded, and so I think it's important for us to continue to put out the message that if something happens to you, speak up, say something, you know, don't just sit in isolation, because, you know, it happens to a lot of people.
You know, and I'm glad you said that, and said it in that way, because, you know, fraud is the new, you know, chief property crime. You know, we don't, I almost hate to say it, and people, the station kinda look at me when I do say it, but house breaks are way, way down. That was, when I was a detective, that was our bread and butter. You were, you were a night detective, and around five o'clock, the phone started ringing because people would come home and the house had been broken into. People don't bring in houses anymore. I mean, we just don't have house breaks like we used to, and it's been that way the last four or five years or so that they're down. Crime may be down, but there's no less evil in the world. You know, people who steal have found new ways to steal, and the way they steal is by fraud and scams, and just as you shouldn't feel awkward about calling and saying, gee, you know, I had, my house got broken into, it's not your fault, and it's not your fault that you've been defrauded, because some of these people are really very, very clever, and it's the new crime, and it's the new way that people steal, and so people should not feel guilty, and they should not feel awkward about calling us, and they could call and say any, hey, I got a phone call, and I think I was being defrauded, but I never was out any money. We don't take reports on those, but obviously we logged the call, and then when people are defrauded, some money, we begin an investigation, and like in this case, where we were able to identify, a lot of these subjects are overseas, so even if we could identify them, we can't bring them to justice here in the United States. In this case, she was working interstate, and we were able to get her taken into custody, Detective Green and the other detectives as well did a nice job with it, but the point is that this is the, this is the new crime, it's the way people commit crime, and you should not feel guilty or awkward or ashamed or anything, because you've been the victim of this particular crime, because this is, this is the way, this is where we are now.
Thank you.
Mr. Plasko?
Oh, thanks for being here and the report?
Thank you.
Mr. Donnelly?
Chief, I was just gonna thank you for including in tonight's memorandum the commendations for the, I'm gonna name them, Detective Baker, Detective, I'm sorry, Sergeant Baker, Detective Green, Officer Cullen, and Officer Fisk. I thought the commendations were well deserved, really impressed that the acting U.S. Attorney, Joe Levy, took the time to send a letter to Norwood thanking them for their diligent and excellent work in a human trafficking case, and as you, as you read through that detail, it really gives you a perspective of how this, these police officers took care of a person that was a very, very dire situation, and your commendation is well placed. Thank you.
And I've seen, I've seen Mr. Levy since then, and he said, you know, verbally how much he appreciated the work of our officers, and the case that Mr. Donnelly was referring to is a, we had a check on the well-being of a young woman who swore up and down that she was fine, and that there was nothing going wrong, and the officers didn't for a minute believe her, particularly Sergeant Baker, and took steps to initiate a human trafficking investigation, and ended up in federal court. That's the case that Mr. Donnelly is referring to, and it was a nice, and the assistant U.S. Attorney, the prosecutor, the case, not a Norwood native, the Norwood slant to it, who wrote a very nice email to me, to me as well, so thank you for bringing that up, they did nice work.
They did, absolutely. Thank you.
Great, thank you. The only question I have is, how is Deputy Chief Patton doing down in Quantico?
I talked to him Sunday.
Yeah.
At the FBI National Academy in Quantico, and he was, he's enjoying it and looking forward to coming home, which is, he's about two and a half weeks off from graduation, he graduates December seventh, I wanna say.
Excellent.
But that's a marvelous program, and, and he's learned a great deal and made great contacts, and he'll, he'll be better off for it, it's a, it's a great experience.
Great, great, thank you. Okay, thank you so much for being here, we appreciate it, and see you Thursday night.
See you Thursday night.
Okay, take care.
Thanks, chief.
Okay, I'm gonna go back to item four point one for discussion. This is a liquor violation, sixty-one Endicott Street, Unit twenty-six A. Yeah, we have a report from the chief that I've been receiving from his Sergeant Carey about the incident, and then we have a summary from Mr. Mizuko as well. So let's have a discussion.
Well, I, you know, I'll open the discussion with, I realize that, that this isn't a egregious violation of the, of the liquor license, but it is a violation, however, you know, based on the submitted information, the follow-up, you know, I do think this is something that does warrant the board of selectmen to take an action with, and I'll open with that, and see if other members agree that perhaps action is needed by this, by this bond.
Great, thank you. Mr. Plasko?
Yeah, unfortunately, it was a violation, and there's a couple violations in my view. I actually went down to the site, because I was interested in, as I had brought up through a discussion, a concern about outside, use of an outside tent and control of the area, and was to be coordinated with the police chief, I should have kept the police chief there, and he was supposed to clarify things, and I wanted to see for myself what they set up, and if it didn't look right, be able to talk to the board and chief about it for any future allowances or such, because the ADCC does have rules and regulations regarding outside, to a dining, make sure everyone was aware of them and complying with them. And that was a, my visit was approximately three ten in the afternoon, and all behold, there was a tent, the tent was right out front of everything, and I couldn't believe what I saw, and over on the left, on the side of the, where the pond is, all kinds of no parking signs, but cars everywhere, and I weren't necessarily, don't necessarily have ID to the arcade, we don't know where they were down there, because they seemed to be having a very busy day, the whole, the whole development down there. But if you've been down there, all the traffic patterns are really one-way, and I wasn't sure, and I saw what I saw, because I was so stunned to see it, so I turned around, or I didn't turn around, but I continued around and made a second pass, and at that point, while I did not see a tap being drawn, did not see a pouring, saw two gentlemen walking from their table with what clearly to be their sixteen, twenty-ounce-type glasses, dark liquid in them, and they did have a keg there with a Sam Adams tap on it, at that, under that tent, and they walked across the street, so they weren't even in the patio area, they weren't even in the area where they're supposedly gonna keep control of any outside use of the alcohol. But what got me more concerned about that was afterwards, it was explained to me that the chief tried to reach them not till Friday.
Yeah.
Because he didn't get the information from us, so shame on us, we should have got that sooner to the chief. And also, I was looking at the, what they get for, to prove that we, you know, that we approved them, having, you know, what we give them for a license or whatever, and what we give them is a copy of their application signed by the chairman, but at the bottom, there's a place for special conditions or remarks, and we voted that it be stipulated that they not use that license until they've been cleared by the chief. It was blank, so we didn't tell them to check with the chief. So by the time they talked with the chief, it was that day. Unfortunately, the way it was told to me was that the, when the chief checked with them, they told him there was gonna be no tents outside, and then there was. So there seems to be more than just the fact that the time on their application was at five o'clock, and they started at least two hours earlier, if not earlier than that, and they don't seem to be totally frank and upfront with us anytime we've talked to them, you know, they don't even know how many days they're on, they're supposed to be operating on their lease, and different things they've sent to the zoning board and so forth, so it's just very concerning to me. I think under this, with all the going on that I'm making, I think in the end, based on the pluses and minuses of everybody's involvement, the thing we should do, if anything, and I think we should do it, is the recommendation of the manager to send them a letter stating the fact that we are aware that they were serving prior to the time that was allowed on their application, that that's a violation, and be warned that future violations could result in them not receiving, you know, licenses in the future.
Just one clarification. Okay, thank you, Mr. Plasko. Mr. Donnelly?
So in this, in this communication to the, to the applicant, the specific reference is gonna be the consuming of our alcohol before the, they were licensed for five PM start, and it was noted that they were, they were consuming alcohol before five o'clock, so that's the specific reference that, that will. that will generate, that will be referenced in the letter of warning, if you will, I guess we call it.
Sure. Maybe it's a letter of information is a better way to term it. I think that will specifically be referenced, but also clarifying that the application and what they tell us is what we go on, and there's really no deviating from that. You can have an outdoor liquor area. You have to let us know in the application. And if the board remembers, I think what concerned us is some of the marketing materials for this said there'd be a tent. If there's a tent, you need to tell us there's a tent. You need to show us the plan for outside. Certainly, if you tell the chief of police, don't worry, there's nothing happening outside, and then you do something outside. That's the concern. If they had said, chief, we have a tent outside, and here's where the liquor control is going to be set up, and here's how we're complying with the law, that would have been fine. If they needed their, if they wanted their event to start at 1:00, that's fine. But the application is not just a, a one-day liquor license is not just a permit to do whatever you want in a given space. It's a very specific license for specific actions. We can be flexible, but that application needs to be accurate. So, I think we would specifically sort of let them know that it appears to us there was a violation, and that's unacceptable, and it can certainly jeopardize future one-day liquor licenses. And further, that the information they put on their application is important, and that's what they're judged against, and that has to be accurate. And if they have questions, they can always call and ask. Apparently, the officer had said, you know, your license said 5:00, and the response from whoever was in charge at the site said, well, we didn't really think that was a big deal. That is a big deal to us. You could do it at 2:00. You could do it at 1:00. But we would also want to include that the application is important to reference clearly what they're doing. And I think we should no longer, it's a catch-22. We had a problem with this one-day application. We had the Portuguese Club here earlier, which has gotten a couple of these a year for many years, and there's never been a problem. But we may want to not accept them unless there's a liquor control map in the future.
A control map for...
I was going to bring that recommendation up separate from actually dealing with the arcade. As a matter of practice with the board, we should follow up with that.
Yeah, that was part of your...
It is. And sometimes that can be as simple as you have an event in this room, there's going to be somebody at the door that checks IDs. That's acceptable. It doesn't need to be an architect's rendering of a site, but we should get something so we can look at it and know.
Yeah.
Exactly what the setup is.
Yeah. And I think, not to jump on your comments, but, you know, on their website, they were advertising this beer tent to start at noon, and on the application, it clearly said 5:00. I don't think they would be that brazen. You know, the officer's report did say that the owner seemed earnestly unaware that the hours of service was an issue. You know, I mean, it's still a violation. I'm not disputing that. But I would hope that they understand that you have to adhere to what you put on the application. Otherwise, what good is the application?
Correct. Accuracy in the application is very important, especially for liquor, which remember, is ultimately regulated by the state.
Right.
Not just us. It's not, I mean, I would hope somebody fills out a town common permit, and they stick to it. But if a wedding at the gazebo shows up 15 minutes early, it's not a big deal. Serving alcohol 15 minutes is a blur of time, creates liability issues, it creates public safety issues, and it's in violation of a license that has been issued.
And they could very well have been serving at 12:00, since that's what they were advertising. Not to say that they were.
Correct.
Certainly before 5:00. Sorry, Mr. Sad or Ms. Crowe?
No, my only thought is that, I haven't been down there yet, but I know they have it a lot of functions. And, you know, that's manufacturing. It's now it's sliding to something else that the neighborhood might not want to have these traffic going up and down that street all day. So, I know we have a letter here from one of the residents, so just give them a stern warning and say, this is the rules. If you don't follow me, just don't get them anymore.
Sure, sure. Ms. Crowe.
I would agree with the manager on, you know, in addition to, hey, here's the specific thing that, you know, we can verify happened. What you put in your application matters, the time matters, the place matters, how many guests you're estimating matters. Like, these things matter. And you need to be following them. So, I think that a letter of warning, like say, or information, however you want to frame that, is appropriate in this case, because you need, if you're applying for things with the town, you need to understand the extent of what you're entitled to, what you're not entitled to. You can't just make assumptions about the way it works with something that's regulated like this.
It's a matter of public trust being placed on them, and they're violating it.
Yeah. The chairman, just maybe we could take her suggestion, and I don't know if they get a copy of this at the end, signed by us or the secretary, saying what the, you know, just in bold letters, please stick to the rules.
On that point...
No, I don't need more than that.
Yeah.
I was saying something like that.
Yeah. I mean, on that point, I think what Mr. Mizuko is speaking to about the letter, you know, maybe it's more of a letter of instruction. These are the rules. And maybe, that is something that we can use in this case, but also perhaps consider an applicant to receive the sort of the real, you know, you know, when they apply, we're able to also kind of point them to the list of instructions and rules that they need to adhere to.
Couldn't we add that they should, you know, be in compliance with their application as approved, and all ABC laws and regulations, as well as regulations of the town, and then send them a copy? We have a printed copy, which they all have or should have had. And just one more time, so they, if they've forgotten, if you had this in the past, as a reminder.
Go ahead.
To that point, I will just, Mr. Plasko did make a motion.
Yes.
I would like to second the motion for the letter of information of a letter, or a letter of instruction, whatever term we want to use, providing the detail that we have discussed per Mr. Plasko's motion. I second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous. So, just to clarify, that's a letter of instruction. It's not a violation.
Correct.
Right.
I mean, it is a first-time applicant or a one- or two-time applicant. They are relatively near to the process, but the, so I guess we'll call it a letter of instruction, that this is how the process works. Please, we've advised of this, you can't do this again.
Yeah.
We have, and those regulations I just cited.
Yes.
We have a set of penalties. Unfortunately, when we created those penalties, I think it was mostly Salt Malone to put it together. I think we only thought of permanent license holders, not one days. So, you have to kind of live with it, or play with it, what's appropriate.
Yeah.
And I think in this, as we've all said, I think in this case, a stern warning is enough for all that's appropriate.
Yeah. I just want to make sure, you know, that we're naming it the right thing, because I think the connotation of violation versus letter of instruction is important. Great. Okay.
Just to that point, Mr. Chairman, to the follow-up in that memo, do we want to, and again, sometimes we have a problem, so we tend to over-control after a problem, and we don't have a problem for 10 years. Do we want to require a map, however simply drawn, for every one-day liquor license that comes before the board?
I think it would be helpful, and we should make it a policy. I picked out a motion. The Portuguese Club, the way I read this application tonight, it sounds like it's an indoor wedding. But in the past, we have approved outdoor events, and that's what them close off the street and everything. So, if it's anything like that, we definitely need to know what we're doing, what we're approving. And if we need to fill, because we want to prove it, but we want to prove it again with certain conditions, we know what we're doing.
Yeah, maybe something where if there's a box, or if there's an outdoor element, you have to include.
Outdoor element or indoor, if it's a public, maybe a public event, we may well include it.
We already have that for permanent licenses, but I think we'd like to make a motion that we add that.
Okay.
With one-day licenses as well.
Okay, so, a motion by Mr. Plasko to amend the application for one-day licenses to include a map and a control narrative?
Yeah, that's a good way to phrase it.
Seconded by Mr. Sad. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Great. That brings us to item 4.1. Oh, sorry, Ms. Crowe.
One last thing on this. Mr. Plasko mentioned that what had been delivered to them was missing instruction that we had intended to give them. So, I just wanted a little clarification if we understand the root cause of how that happened. Because I would hate to think that we, you know, we have the meeting to say, oh, let's make sure we turn them off.
That's an internal thing. That's happened here. So, it's an internal thing we have to work on improving.
Well, it's sort of a catch-22. The instruction was the chief has to approve it. So, we weren't going to give them a license saying the chief has to approve it. The chief called them to make sure it was okay. So, that's kind of odd.
Some of these things get to be interpretations, because to me, the onus was on them. So, it gets the chief's approval. But we couldn't expect that if we never told them they had to get it.
Correct. Norwood's just a couple, and again, remember, this license came up, as they do sometimes, just a few days before the event. So, the likelihood that we could return to them a written application saying, please contact the police chief and get this done, in the three or four-day turnaround, was likely not going to happen, given the timeline. But it's always a balance for us, where we want these things to happen, we want events to happen, we know things come up, we know sometimes not what comes up first. So, we all make as many accommodations as we have, and then sometimes we make too many accommodations.
Yep. Okay, great. Sorry. So, there is a public hearing that we kind of breeze by. I don't think anyone is here for this.
I'll double-check, but I don't think so.
Okay. I think this is more of a housekeeping thing.
Since this license has been approved by this board, and now by the ABCC to be transferred, there's no action to take. So, I take a motion that we take no actions now.
Motion made by Mr. Plasko to take no action on the matter of the wine and market continuance for the all-alcohol beverages. Made, seconded by Mr. Donnelly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Great. And Jess, you'll let them know that they're all sad.
Just to clarify, that motion was to close the hearing and take no action, correct?
We had closed.
Oh, no, we hadn't closed the hearing. So, first motion's to close the hearing. Thank you for the correction.
Great. Okay, thanks. Item 4.2, one-day liquor permit request, Hometown Arcade. Hometown Arcade submitting application for a one-day liquor permit for stern pinball launch, followed by sang-alang 40th birthday celebration. This event is to be held Saturday, December 2nd, 2023, from 12:00 p.m. until 11:00 p.m., with 150 guests expected. Just a little bit of information beforehand for discussion. I know that the Hometown Arcade was scheduled to be in front of the zoning board this evening with regard to their special permit application. They have asked for a continuance, so that most likely will be heard December 5th. So, with that information, you know, you can take it for what it is. One issue that I did have on this is, it does seem like two events kind of rolled into one. I'm not sure, Mr. Plasko, maybe you could draw upon your experience, but should this be two separate requests? Because it's two separate events?
Not, I don't think it's necessary in this case, because if the stern pinball was making the application, like, for the arcade, remember, we have one for a wedding?
Yeah.
And they made their own application?
Yeah.
Then each, obviously, would have to have their own. But this is the arcade's making the application.
Okay. So, it's okay that it's...
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you for clarifying. That being said, questions, comments from the board?
Need a motion to approve?
Yeah.
Motion to approve?
Motion approved made by Mr. Sad, seconded by Ms. Crowe. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Unanimous. Item 4.3, one-day liquor permit request, Hometown Arcade. Submitting request to reschedule their Nuggets fundraiser to November 18th, 2023, from 6:00 p.m. until 11:00 p.m., and their Venom pinball launch to November 18th, 2023, from 12:00 p.m. until 6:00 p.m.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Plasko.
Probably should have brought this up with the last one. Stern pinball launch, Venom pinball launch. Do we even know what we're approving? What is this for?
Yeah, I know what that is.
There we go, Ms. Crowe.
So, essentially, a lot of the companies that do, like, arcade machines, pinball machines, any of that, they'll sort of do public events in many locations to celebrate the launch of the product. And so, they will reach out to local communities that have arcades, or any venue that tends to have pinball machines, and say, hey, you can host a party to celebrate our new product launch. You know, movie theaters will sometimes do this if they have, like, the movies coming and...
Yeah. Probably a stretch for comparison, but a winery giving samples into supermarkets to promote their product.
Yeah, it's a promotional, it's a promotional thing, and it's, as best I can tell, when I was looking into it, the Venom launch, because back in my hometown, they're doing almost the same thing on the same date at a local arcade there as well. So, it's an opportunity for local businesses to host traffic.
Sounds like the arcade's applying. But Venom pinball, always some theory here, because we don't have any, a lot of detail, I don't think. They could be making the application, because they want to host of.
It's not quite the same, because essentially, they are allowing their brand to be used by whatever business wants to use that as an excuse to get foot traffic to their local restaurant, or bar, or arcade, or whatever location.
It's a promoter business. They can do that up to 30 times a year, so, as long as they don't violate the...
There you go. Okay. Do I have a motion?
To approve the Nuggets, this is the Nuggets application?
Yeah, why don't we take each individually? Motion to approve the Nuggets fundraiser reschedule.
Because we approved that before, but we're just changing the date.
Just changing the date.
Basically, the approval one day for November 18th, from 12:00 noon to 6:00 p.m. You don't really need, oh, 11:00 p.m. actually.
We don't need the other one?
Yeah.
Okay. A motion approved made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Ms. Crowe. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous. Great. Okay, we can hop, oh, yes.
Did we actually receive two separate applications? Well, we, no, we received one, one for Nuggets, but Nuggets was on a different day.
That was last meeting, right?
So, approved the transfer for the new date for the Nuggets, and the Venom, which will result in a...
A license from 12:00 to 11:00.
...from 12:00 to 11:00 p.m.
Yep. Okay, great. Thank you for clarification. Item 4.7, Town Common Request, Nativity Display. Kevin Murphy submitting a request to place the nativity display on the Norwood Town Common beginning Saturday, December 2nd, and ending on Saturday, January 6th, 2024. Pleasure to the board.
Motion to approve?
Motion approved made by Mr. Sad, seconded by Mr. Plasko. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous. Town Common Request, Red Carpet Event. When I read this, I got nervous. I thought that...
Do you vote now?
Norwood High School submitting a request to hold their red carpet event on prom night, May 3rd, 2024, from 5:00 p.m. until 6:30 p.m. This request also includes blocking off parking spaces for five buses and NCM truck.
I think to approve.
A second.
Motion approved made by Ms. Crowe, seconded by Mr. Donnelly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous. 4.9, Town Common Road Closure Request, Annual Winter Extravaganza. John Kinney, Superintendent of Recreation, submitting application for Town Common Use for the annual winter extravaganza to be held on Sunday, November 26th, 2023, from 12:00 p.m. until 5:30 p.m. Mr. Kinney has also requested coordination with the DPW for closure of Central Street on the day of the event. Jess, I believe there was an email asking for an adjustment of the hours that came in from Mr. Kinney.
Yes, that's reflected on this agenda.
Just wanted to make sure. Perfect. Pleasure to the board.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Mr. Sad. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous. Item 4.10, Request for Municipal Parking Lot Permit. Request Remarkable Cleanouts. Mark Waters of Remarkable Cleanouts submitting a request for three municipal parking lot permits for commercial vehicles.
I like the manager's recommendation. Tell them to change their registration and then ask.
From Jamaica Plain to Norwood.
Yeah, and it's more about, I mean, technically, there's some excise revenue, but if the vehicles are going to be housed here, they should get registered here. We did allow, we had this a few weeks ago, the parking policy the board established for our parking lots, for some of the commercial businesses in the downtown area to possibly have to park their vehicles somewhere overnight. So, I think this is consistent with it. It is three vehicles, but they're small vans, so they're consistent with what we've seen a lot. But we should, should you want to approve or require them to register here in Norwood. And they, I checked with the chief earlier, they can register at their business address here in Norwood.
And I think for clarity, you do have regulations somewhere for that parking lot. We should add that.
It definitely is residential. I'll double-check if it's in there for commercial. We just haven't had very many of the commercial ones. And I mean, there might be a situation where it's a corporate vehicle that a company has to register it somewhere. Somebody drives, like, an Orkin truck that I think we have in there. But I suppose in that case, we could say, look, you want the permit, you got to register it here.
Yeah, I think that's good.
We'll double-check and see, but I think it's appropriate to require for these commercial vehicles.
Mike, did you want to say something?
Just when these people pack up in these public lots during a snowstorm, what's the ruling?
So, they're given a map, and they're given a set area where they're supposed to, where they're supposed to park. And we also are very clear that we make no representation that the lot will be plowed in enough time for them to get out. We get to the municipal lots when we can get to the municipal lots.
Perfect. Good. Great. Okay. So, do we have a motion approved?
I'll make a motion to approve with the stipulation about the vehicles being registered in Norwood.
Motion approved with the stipulation of registering the vehicles in Norwood made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Mr. Plasko. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous. Traffic Safety Recommendations. Mr. Mizuko.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The board has a memo regarding some traffic safety recommendations that we have. I can read through them if you'd like.
Yeah, just a brief overview, that'd be great.
Sure. One of these items, we had complaints received over vehicles on Napa Street blocking the intersection during the green phase of the traffic light for Wedgewood Drive. There have been two do-not-block intersection signs installed for quite a while. Before it's repaved in the spring, we would like to paint the intersection as indicated on the map that the board has with a do-not-block-the-box. So, that is the first item. The second one is, residents express concern about speeding on East Monroe Street. There is no speed-related signage in the area. We would recommend installing two please-go-slow signs. Site distance on Day Street, looking at Broadway to Manhattan, the...
The DPW would like to block out the last parking space on Broadway as you come to Day Street and post a no parking here to corner sign. And that is the conclusion of the recommendations. And the board has been provided with some maps and diagrams. These are the recommendations of the Traffic Safety Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mazuka. I'm always interested in Mr. Plasko's take on these reports. Here we go.
Well, no, I have no problem with accepting these recommendations, but I want to wholeheartedly endorse the one on Broadway and Day Street. I actually brought that up. The Traffic Committee would, I think we even had a different name for them back then. That's how long ago it was. And nothing ever happened. And I think it was the same night I asked if they look at Vernon Street, the first parking space up from Washington. That corner is so narrow. And when the car parks there, people have, in that lane, have to go into the other lane. And then the light changes and they can't even get through. It's just not safe.
We can also.
And I remember speaking to Mr. Ryan because he had done a great job of trying to squeeze in every parking space. But I said to him, even though we want to do that, some just don't make sense because of line of sight and so forth. So this one definitely needs to be changed. And I requested you also look into the one on Vernon's.
Absolutely. So the corner of Vernon and Wash?
Vernon and Washington, the first, first space up. It's on the side of the building that's, I think, dance.
I don't know what they call them.
We will send that to Traffic Safety. It used to be the Pedestrian Safety Committee that didn't necessarily look at these issues. But some of the board members will remember several years ago, we had a traffic recommendation that a board member brought up and it just sort of got argued out at a meeting and approved. Come to find out, only one neighbor in the neighborhood actually recommended it. And the safety officer from the police department had previously received the request, went up there and recommended not, I think it was installing a stop sign or removing a stop sign. So that's when we changed the process to say, we have everyone, we have engineering, police, fire.
Yeah.
Actually, for Mr. Sad's, I'm an education since he's new. It's the traffic safety is the police safety officer, the fire chief, engineering and the facilities department and DPW. And they all get together and review any traffic related changes before they're selecting to make decisions. So that way the recommendation is coming to you with a consensus recommendation from all the different departments that would be involved to ensure we don't inadvertently remove any stop signs we shouldn't, as this happened in the past.
But for your actions, why do you make a motion, board, accept all three recommendations?
Great. Just on the motion, I just want to reiterate that the process, I think, is really excellent. And I, I think that it's nice to be able to tell residents that if you do have these concerns, you can bring them up, raise them up with Town Hall. And if they merit change, you know, we'll, we'll make the changes. And I think people appreciate that. And the actual report, like who puts this together at Town Hall?
Sharon coordinates it in my office. She, she kind of corrals them.
Can I give her a shout out?
Absolutely.
Yeah, just, it was very concise and informative and so excellent job to Sharon.
I will pass that along.
Okay, motion made to accept the recommendations by the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee made by Mr. Plasko, seconded by Mr. Sad. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous. Item four point 12, Cemetery Deeds For Signature Of The Board.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved and accept made by Mr. Sad, seconded by Ms. Grow. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous. Tax, item four point 13, Tax Levy Hearing. Town Assessor Tim McDonough submitting request to hold the public hearing on December 12th, 2023.
Motion to table. You don't want to charge any taxes, do you?
I don't think so, right?
This is one of the most critical pieces of financial year. He almost gave me a heart attack.
He, I could see.
What's he up to?
His lip just curled a little.
Bring that one up to the Rigid Balancing Committee to see what their reaction is.
As I say, Tony complains about two and a half, let me bet, what about zero?
Just not raising the taxes at all.
Let's approve the hearing.
Motion approve the date, the public hearing on December 12th, 2023, made by Ms. Plasko, seconded by Mr. Sad. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
And just if I could, Mr. Chairman, I would be remiss if I didn't thank Mr. McDonough and his board and the treasurer for working with me on a date that worked for my schedule. So I appreciate that.
Great. Okay, item four point 14, Advance Of Funds In Lieu Of Borrowing Report For Signature Of The Board. Mr. Mazuka.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is just a process that allows us to complete capital projects if we have cash available prior to completing a formal bonding, bonding, bonding for the project. Some projects are ready to go and the town maintains a healthy enough, healthy enough cash reserve that we're able to do so.
Okay. Do we need a motion to approve and accept or?
Make a motion that we, for motion the board sign the, the documents as per Mr. Mazuka's request. Are they available for our signature this evening or?
Yes.
Okay. Right, motion made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Mr. Plasko. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous. Item four point 15, South Norwood Lights For Discussion. Mr. Mazuka.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The board has in the past discussed the possibility of whether we want, would want to look at removing poles from Washington Street in South Norwood and or the ward. And we've looked at this internally a number of times over quite a few decades. I actually have memos going back to John Morgan, who was John Carroll's predecessor.
Wow.
Yeah, so we always look at it. What we'd like to do, since the topic comes up and it's been a while since we've comprehensively looked at it, is if the board is interested, just go ahead to a feasibility study of what that process would look like, what we think the cost would work and how it would work out. It would sort of let us refresh our numbers, get an objective third party look at what we're doing and what we could possibly do. And then we'll be able to bring that back to the board and say, look, this is what was looked at. These technically, these look like the options and these are cost projections. And maybe we will make a decision or maybe we will hold off. And in 10 years, there'll be another memo from someone about it. But I think it's probably time that we realistically look at it sort of comprehensively.
Sure. I'll open it up for discussion. Just a quick question on how we pay for that feasibility study.
Yeah, we would have to move money around in the light department budget, but we can find a way to absorb it.
To do that?
It's not necessary. We'll, we generally have enough money for some studies in a given year. We can't do three, four or five of them. We'll find a way to make it happen.
Yeah, just want to, for those at home. Great. Any questions or comments, Mr. Sad? I know you've got some.
On the motion, we've talked about this and we want to bring it forward. We have so much development going on in South Norwood, the school, the HOS pool, 150 apartments down with.
Space Center.
Space Center. We have another one at Conkadab going online. We have some other lots that might be buildable soon. South Norwood is just prime for a pop. And I think this will just enhance the beauty of South Norwood to enhance the money we're putting in South Norwood as all those projects. So I wholeheartedly support this and look forward to working with this project.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Sad. I know you've been a big champion of getting this done. So.
For me, I'm in favor of doing the study because I've been trying to stay up to date on that type of infrastructure. Because on one hand, you know, there's, there's definite benefits to burying them, right? Lower fire risks, lower storm incidents. And then there's also the counter side of that is how are the costs lately? Every time I've looked at this, it's usually like five to 10 times the cost, especially if you're retrofitting what was above ground and then trying to bury it. And so can it pay for itself essentially?
Well, it'll never pay for itself, but that aesthetic value, to Mr. Sad's point, might be worth its weight in gold. The last time I sat down with the light department, we looked at this. There actually might be a process where we're not actually burying lines as much as bringing them in from behind, which might make it more cost effective. But you're right, it is generally more stable to have lines underground. It is far, far more expensive. You'll have less failures, but sometimes when you do have a failure, it can take, take longer. But it is a complicated process. Remember, it's not just us and electricity. We have our own internet company. There's Comcast, there's Verizon. There's a lot of work that needs to be done. Services might need to get upgraded and we'd have to look at, is there a legal mechanism to help offset that cost? If there's not, it might be great. We can do this and it's going to cost the ratepayers $10 million. And by the way, everyone has to buy a new service at $5,000. But it's time to have a, an appropriate, proper look at it, I think would be a good move for the town.
Make sure also that flooding assessment is part of that review because the water inundation is a factor for that type of stuff too.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you. Mr. Sad, do you?
Just FYI also, I've talked to Congressman Lynch's office, Rush's office and Rogers's office. They feel comfortable that they can get some federal money and state money for us. And I think what Tony's saying is some of the electrical background I have, we're going to backfeed it from the Palm Street and not put too much underground. And it's all going to go where the crosswalks back across the street and put some nice lights up like different other towns and make some beautiful area down there now.
Thank you, Mr. Sad. Mr. Plasko.
I started off very pessimistic about, because I've heard, going back all those years, Mr. Mazuka just mentioned, reports and recommendations not to go forward of the cost and of the burden on all the other property owners that have to change their services, as well as when we were talking underground, all the other utilities that are involved. And the nature or the size, the scope of that job is just massive. It was recently, a couple of years back, a few years back, I guess everything seems like a couple of years back, but a little while ago was briefly mentioned, come in from the back service. And we never really explored that further. However, I hate to take a project that I'm already pessimistic about and make it bigger. But it seems to me if we're going to be serious about possibly doing this, that we also include the ward. We've got downtown done, down to the hospital. Then we're going to do South Norwood. I'm going to leave the area in between untouched. I think that whole corridor should be included. Adds more to the study, adds more to any final project. But I don't see why, once you're doing it, you would leave this one section undone.
Do the whole town. It's all the town.
I agree with Mr. Plasko's assessment. We can add the ward into it. Just looking at that entire Washington Street corridor, I don't think we can bury all the lines in the whole town. We're raising fees and rates enough as it is, but I, I think to that point, you're right. You know, we can absorb the cost of a study, but it's time to look at it and look at it comprehensively. And I think Mr. Sad brings up a good point. If you look at what we're investing in South Norwood, just with the middle school, with the pool, with property acquisition, with the Morse House, the private investment that's going on, it's probably time, same thing with the ward to Mr. Plasko's point. I mean, you're going to have a brand new hospital in a year and a half or two years there. Why not look at it? This will take some time. So I don't want anyone to think that next week we're going to have a, a report in. But over time, what we'll get is a, you know, we'll have to bring on a firm that does it. But a good study looking at, here's the costs, here's the pros, here's the cons, here's how you would do it. It's going to cost money. What's the impact of the rates going to be and how do we spread that out? What can we do? I think it's time doing it. It's an important, it could be an important investment for the community. It may ultimately fail because as in the past, it could be very expensive and we may look at it and say, we don't want to do it, but we got to keep trying.
My, my discussion with the people at the light department over the years when we talk about overhead and underground, underground is somewhat more reliable. You're not subject to Mother Nature as much. But when there is a problem, it's a lot longer to fix it and more dangerous.
Yes.
So it's not necessarily the end goal.
Correct. Thank you. And just, just the final study might show there could be costs to the town side of the ledger, if you will. It doesn't, you know, the, the light department's not, may not be able to pay for every single piece of a project if there's town infrastructure that has to get replaced. I don't know that that's the case, but that's why we want an actual firm to.
Yeah, we'll learn.
To look at it and make sure we're doing a thorough detailed search. So we also know what we're getting into. We hate to start the process and say, gee, you know what? We're digging up Washington Street. We better do the water line. Well, wait a minute, we, we're not doing any lining this year, so we can't do that water line.
How can we look into what the cost to the property owners will be?
That'll be, we'll make sure that's included as part of the feasibility study. Some, it'll be, it'll take some time to do it properly. But there'll be an estimate of there's X number of buildings, X number of services need to be upgraded, total Y cost. And we'll have to see if there's a way that we're able to come up with some sort of a program.
Do that with water, putting in new lines? Can you do that with electricity?
You can.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Plasko. Mr. Donnelly.
Oh, yeah, I, I think this is worth, we'll all put it forward a feasibility study. I mean, the last time perhaps was, has it been done in the last 10 years, 10 years ago or?
Twenty.
Formal study, I'm not sure. I'd have to check. But the, internally, the light department has prepared a memo and cost estimates realistically every seven to 10 years. I think right, maybe five years ago was the last time. I have a memo from Jim Collins and again, we have internal looks going back to the mid 70s.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not an electrical engineer, but you know, perhaps there's, there's been opportunity for different technologies or different ways of, of infrastructure for electrical lines that has changed in the last 10 years. And the feasibility study might be an opportunity to explore those if they are available. So I do support the feasibility study going forward.
Great. I agree with everything being said. Excellent. We don't need to vote or we can?
Um, just a motion to support, a motion to ask the manager to go forward would be.
Motion made by Mr. Sad, seconded by Ms. Grow. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous. Great. Item four point 16, Sunrise Agreement For Consideration Of The Board. Mr. Mazuka provided a memo to us and I'll let you start the conversation.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the board knows, several months ago, you voted to have Mr. Ryan and I negotiate with Sunrise Assisted Living, which is looking to build a facility in Sharon and connect to our sewer system. We lasted this, to this scale in 2006 with an Avalon project in Sharon. What we did is we took the per unit cost, we added a significant inflation area cost. Mark needed a couple of things from an engineering standpoint. And when we do that math out for Sunrise's project of 100, sorry, of 96 units, that comes in at just a total of $1.6 million is what we would require for them. $1,650,000 for them to tie into the sewer system. So we think it's a fair rate. We did get a larger dollar number when we did the Avalon job in 2006, but that was significantly more units. And we know that there's at least one or two more requests of entities outside town looking to tie into water or sewer and taking the same per unit cost. And now we're tying it to a cost, I think will be helpful in those areas as well. If the board is willing to go forward with this, you can authorize the manager to proceed and we will finalize with Sunrise. The money would come in and to be used for sewer I and I work. There is actually a capital project for sewer I and I on the plan. We believe this could likely absorb that whole cost and not have a need to borrow for that project or otherwise undertake that project at the expense of the ratepayers.
Thank you, Mr. Mazuka. I'm going to go in reverse. Mr. Donnelly.
Yeah, this, very nicely done. I guess my questions would be, obviously, the proceeds from Sunrise Connection would be water and sewer fund into retained earnings.
Depending on how the, sorry, the payment is structured. Sometimes they're structured as a donation for the purpose. Otherwise, we have to wait for a complete cycle to go through before we could then possibly appropriate it. So we'd be looking at next November. We want to sign a deal, get the money and start the project of the I and I work that we're going to do. We did the same thing with the Town of Sharon with our interconnection agreement for them. We wanted to get work done. So if we just take, actually, that would have been general fund revenue. If we had just taken it in, it would have been a while before we could start any of the work. So we'd like to, the way we'll structure it, it won't go through the whole retained earnings cycle.
So it'll be a grant?
Grant or donation.
So these are.
I was going to say, because otherwise, check your legality by just putting it in that fund.
That's why it's going to be in the form of, we have to finalize the documents. It'll be in the form of a grant or donation.
If I may.
Sure.
How is this then going to affect the ongoing rate?
Yeah.
They, they pay a premium on the sewer rate for what they discharge.
Same as what we charge Avalon?
Correct. I think it's 10% above the rack rate is what we charge out of town connections.
Yeah, so my other question would be, it's revenue coming into, into the, into the water sewer. And you know, for I and I work, for purchase of retained earnings, is any of this? And I will be more global. You indicated another possible connection here that, that it's under discussion. Can any of these funds also be used to, to relieve rate, you know, reduce the rate impact that we may be seeing from future water projects going forward?
Sure, both directly and indirectly. And I guess an example of this would be the I and I project that we know we have to get done partially as a result of this project. That's on the capital plan for next year. If we have to go ahead and do that project in the rates we'll be setting in 18 months, we will be factoring in the cost of that project. It may be somewhat insignificant. It may be a half a percent or three quarters of a percent on the rate. By taking these funds and getting that project done, we do not need to raise the rates at all to accommodate that project cost.
Good. And is it one time fee? Are there any annual, does this add to the work, the sewer department needs to work maintaining the new connection? Or is it, is it just seamlessly?
It's fairly minimal. It's one additional connection along an otherwise busy stretch of road. And again, they do pay about 10% above what we would otherwise charge if they were just a business located in Norwood. So we get a, a bit of a premium. We've done the same thing with Avalon. We've done it with the Town of Sharon. We have a small amount. We have a couple of residential customers that connect on the edges of the town, which is common in most towns. So we, we do get a premium on top of it for provision of the service.
Okay.
Who pays for the installation they do?
Yeah, they take care of their work on their end. And any work that we require for them to connect to our end.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Plasko. Do you have any comments? I'm sorry.
I already put in a question. Thank you, love.
Nothing additional for me. No questions.
Just a quick question for the people out in TV land. Where is this location?
It's on, near the Sharon line. We won't notice any
About a golf course?
Yes, we won't notice any development on, there's no development in Norwood.
Oh, no. Oh, no. But is this
No impact on the golf course.
Is this the 24 acres right before the
I believe so, is where they're building their project.
Okay, so they would come and just tie into our road, we're going to cross. Okay, good. I just want people to know where it's located.
Yep, and again, no, no impact to us from the actual development. We have, just as a matter of course, we have a top-notch water and sewer system, we have good infrastructure. One of the benefits of not just being, not only being an MWR community with virtually unlimited water and sewer capacity throughout the entire town, is we've maintained our system well, so when we have opportunities like this, we're able to do it, which ultimately benefits the ratepayers.
We should take over the NWR, right, with Fred Lasky, that'd be great, he'd get nervous about that one. Great job.
I don't think he's going to give it up, Mike.
So, yeah, Ms. Mizuka, thank you very much, and I know you worked with Mr. Ryan extensively, so thank you to Mr. Ryan.
Absolutely.
You need a motion for authorization to proceed.
Correct.
We have a motion made by Mr. Sad, seconded by Ms. Grow, all those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye unanimous, great. Thank you again, Ms. Mizuka.
My pleasure.
Okay, item 4.17, license and permit fees for discussion. Again, you provided the board with an in-depth memo and some comparative fees of other towns. Ms. Mizuka.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are looking at updating the license and permit fees that the Board of Selectment issues, so those are common VIC licenses, liquor licenses, auto licenses, arcade and amusement licenses, and a few other smaller ones. We had last looked at this pre-COVID, it is one of those things that we, we're actually looking to increase the liquor fees in particular, as well as the rest of the selectmen fees. Going into the year COVID started, we had, I think, a three-year plan to look at raising fees, and we've continued to hold it off as a result, specifically, some of what happened with the pandemic, the impact on restaurants, we actually cut the fees in half for one of those years to help out restaurants, but we need to get back on track with good financial planning. As a result, this has come up, we have not raised fees in quite a few years. The board has a memo listing where we think we should go with some of these fees, the projected additional revenue, and we've looked at other towns, I think we may have included a link to a more extensive spreadsheet that had more examples, but nobody likes raising fees, but it is that time, we typically do look at it around this time of year to tie them in with a new calendar year. We'll be doing the same with cemetery fees, a memo will be forthcoming on that as well.
And could you just explain this Sunday fee from the Commonwealth?
Yeah, the state has a number of laws that are just dated, and a Sunday entertainment fee, so if you want to have a band playing, there's a fee, and then there's a separate fee if you want entertainment on Sundays. Honestly, it's just something that didn't change when the state changed the blue laws. I think folks forget, 20 years ago, you couldn't buy alcohol in a packy, package store in Massachusetts on a Sunday, the state finally changed that, and unfortunately, some of these old entertainment licenses, they really date back to your more puritan era, where it was a big deal if you got an entertainment license on Sunday, but now most chain restaurants are open seven days a week, but we can't eliminate them, we're still sort of stuck dealing with this statutory framework.
And that's baked into our fee?
Correct.
Yeah, right. Okay, Ms. Plasko.
Thank you. I agree with the manager, in fact, I had started looking into some of them, and you mentioned to me, had staff doing it, so I was able to stop working and let them do their thing, so I appreciate the work involved. It has been a while since we thought about increasing some of these fees, and not only because we're Simon McGee and want to take as much money from people, but we do have to do share responsibility, and in our town financial plan that we agreed with the other department, the schools, FinCom and everything, we said we would keep an eye on and keep these fees all relevant, and increase from time to time is appropriate, so it is more than time we at least be looking at it. I have a couple of questions, if I may. Under type, general, under subtype, farmer's market. Now, most of these, when I, as I look across, they're pretty much right what everybody else is, or the average of everybody else, but on that one, I'm not quite sure what you mean by farmer's market, and it's like more than twice the next highest one?
Yeah, it's a statutory-issued license, we do one a year. We were at $1,200 for some reason, I think somebody probably said, well, it's one license and a farmer's market can run so many times.
So it is for the farmer's market?
Correct. We're recommending dropping it to $500, which is where Natick is, that's still above other ones. We could drop it down to $100. We only have one farmer's market, we want it to be successful, it's just one of these licenses that we're required to technically offer and issue.
I usually want to suggest that we increase these, but I do think that one's a little high. I would make a motion to reduce that to $500.
The recommendation is actually to go to 500, Mr.
Yeah, Bill, they want to raise it to 500.
No, it's currently $1,200, we're recommending it go down to $500.
Are you looking for a recommendation for all of these?
Oh, recommendations over on the right hand side, I'm looking at under Norwood, I'm sorry. Oh, that's better, yeah, okay.
And who pays that $1,000?
The Market Association, yeah, the committee.
Do you want to raise it to 500?
No, no, this is fine. I was looking under the column, Norwood, comparing it with other towns, it's sort of the recommended column.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Make a motion, we accept the approvals. I would notice the manager's letter says that because we haven't done this, and a few of them are significant, we're making them a year in advance, he's recommending a year in advance.
A year in advance, so what's the timeline for that?
This would go into effect as of January 1st, so all of the common VIC and liquor licenses we're issuing for next year are not under this fee schedule, it's for the following year.
Okay.
Some of them, we've already started the process, but this is next year.
Okay.
On the motion?
Sorry, is there a question?
Sure. Do you have something on the motion?
No, it's in 24.
Correct.
On the motion that I have.
So on the motion, you know, they all make sense, we've done our benchmarking, and we're putting our fees in line with municipalities in our region. I'm just wondering, but some of them are relatively large increases from their current rates, and maybe that is a factor that, if we haven't looked at them since 2017, I'm just wondering, going forward, we commit to just doing this review in another three to four years, not wait six years? Because I'm wondering whether or not the jump would have been, if we had been looking at it earlier, perhaps
More graduated.
It'd be more graduated. I could be wrong, but
No, you're absolutely right, and we did, the problem is, we came up with a three-year fee schedule in 2020, and then the pandemic hit, and we said, hold it off for a couple more years, so
Okay.
Well, and it's great to try to do it every year, but some of the fees, it's a $250 fee, what do you go up every year? We're not going to go to $252, $256, so we'll bring it back probably every third year, assuming there's no more pandemics, knock on wood, we won't delay it, but we did, we knew we didn't want to, we wanted to go a couple of years during the pandemic without outing.
That's good, thank you very much. I should have seconded Mr. Sad's motion? I second.
Okay, just on the motion, so I'm going to bring up the arcade again, but I know in the memo, we talked about having, raising the fee, you know, were we talking about $200 per machine?
That's, yes.
It is on every town, that's how it's supposed to be here, but somehow that could draw.
So that is, and the arcade that is in operation now is our only one, right?
No, there's, there's no other full-service arcades.
That's what I mean, I know that there are restaurants and et cetera that have a few machines.
Correct.
We also have the launch, Monster Golf.
Yeah, they all have a number of arcade machines, exclusively per machine.
And then a lot of others have one or two machines.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about the ones with a lot of machines, you know, I don't know how many there are.
An Agalom, I think it's Agalom, because they have the amusement park there, they have one fee for, if you have, and I'm making this up, the exact number, but I think it's under 20, is $50, over 20 is 150 or 200, whatever, so they go after the big guys, because they're the ones making the money.
Sure, just thinking, it's going to be a hefty fee.
It would, if we didn't have that business in town, I think we'd still be clarifying that it's supposed to be per machine.
Yeah, yeah.
But you can set the fee at whatever reasonable level you want.
No, I'm comfortable with it, it just seems like a big jump, it's more than twice of what it is now, and I'm just thinking
We could do it over two years.
Yeah, so
And remember, they don't do it until next year.
Yeah, I guess, it's a whole year, it's not this January, it's a year of January.
Okay.
That would be $15,000.
For, based on the number of machines they have?
Yes, they have 75 machines.
75 machines, okay. And it's, it's January of '25, is that what we're saying?
Correct.
Is when that fee would be collected?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm sorry, when I asked, you said 24?
Sorry, the fee's going to affect as of January 1st for any licenses that are pulled next year for the following year.
Okay.
Although, there may be some in the middle of the year, I guess somebody could open an auto dealer in the middle of the year, but the bulk of licensing we've just completed is under the old schedule.
Yeah, we could clarify that to the renewals effective January 1st, 2025, and any new licenses to be in accordance with this chart?
That you could do.
Sorry, say that again, I was looking at numbers, why you said that?
Our renewals, okay, these set fees affected January 1st, 2025. If during 2024, new applicants come in, they will be charged according to this fee schedule.
The new fee schedule.
Right.
Okay.
And we're just giving the current people a
Plenty of notice.
Will, because in some cases it is. It's not even high in all cases.
Correct.
So we're really giving some people quite a deal.
Yeah.
Or consideration, I won't call it a deal.
I'm just thinking that the one that jumped out to me was the entertainment license going from 75 to 200. I personally think that that is a pretty big jump.
Yeah, but it's, they're being undercharged now, because we made mistakes in how we charge them, so we're charging them, I forget what we're charging, I think it's 600-something or something like that, instead of in the thousands that it should be compared to every other, that's what every other town does. We're not singling out, we're doing what every other town does.
Yeah.
They're, they're, all these people are in business making money, they're doing it in the town. The town could end up police fire issues, ambulance calls, and those are the reasons we charge fees.
Yeah. If you think a different number would be appropriate, again, it's just a recommendation based on averages in other towns.
Well, motion's already on
You can offer a friendly amendment.
Okay. Yeah, I would like to offer a friendly amendment to recommend that the entertainment auto, amusement, arcades, seven-day category for the subtype be increased to $125.
Second, do you want to make that motion, or you want to second it?
Who made the motion?
It's not a public hearing, just to make sure, okay.
Who made the motion?
Matt.
Made the motion.
Okay, and who made the second? You considered a friendly motion?
Yeah.
Okay, so then the motion on the table is adopt the fees as presented with that one change.
Amendment, yeah.
Okay. Pledge of the Board, Paul, Mr. Donnelly?
He seconded it.
I have no comment, but I will second the amendment.
Second the amendment, okay, so we're voting on the friendly amendment first?
Sure.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, unanimous on the friendly amendment. Now voting on the entirety of the motion?
Aye.
So moved to accept these recommendations made by Mr. Plasko, seconded by Mr. Sad.
This list, as just amended, effective January 1st, 2025, and any new license applications during 2024 will be charged according to this schedule.
Great, motion made by Ms. Plasko, seconded by Mr. Sad, all those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, unanimous, great, thank you. Okay, item 5.1, oh, actually, memorandum, we can take as a whole, Pledge of the Board.
Motion to file.
Motion to file made by Mr. Donnelly, seconded by Ms. Grow, all those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, unanimous. That brings us to the manager's update. Ms. Mizuka.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just two items, one, thank you to certainly this board and town meeting, and the town clerk's office, and my office staff, we have gotten through two-thirds of town meeting, and as always, it was a great digger debate and a great process, a lot of work goes into it, but then when you see the results on town meeting, it is fantastic. And then second, I just encourage the board, if you have a chance tonight or tomorrow, the cable and chairs in Memorial Hall, we did receive them last week, fully restored, this was a CPA project, they look absolutely stunning. Yeah, I mean, they really, as somebody who's generally not interested in furniture and things like that, I'm thoroughly, thoroughly wowed by them, so I highly encourage you, if you have a moment tonight, take a look at them, they're absolutely beautiful, totally justifies why we do CPA, and why we do some of these preservation projects that are sometimes costly and challenging, but they look absolutely fantastic. And I'll leave it at that, we'll be spending enough time together this week.
Great, thank you, Ms. Mizuka. Brings us to selectmen's updates, Mr. Sad.
Couple of things, there's a tree, Mr. Manager outside here, it's got a little stubby sticking on the sidewalk, right in front of St. Catherine's, if they could look at that and kind of remove it, or it's kind of, it's cut down, like about two feet off the ground.
Which side of the street?
On this side, Town Hall side, across St. Catherine's. 67 Casey Street, there's a tree limbs hanging out, if they could look at that.
Sure.
And then Endicott Street, some of the traffic up there, we have to look at that in the near future, and I did talk to, I sent some pictures around to the board, Dean Street, there's, and I talked to the building inspector, Gary, this afternoon, there's a company down there that's now in a residential zone, but it's a little manufacturing strip, I see, that they're, got a tow truck business, or auto repair or something down there, a residential area. And then St. Tim's is a stretch around the bend by Oak and Alomaro, are we tiring that like soon?
I will have to check the road pavement.
Okay, and then, other than that, Eddie Morad, down at Robinwood?
Yep.
Just check with that, probably have with the water. And Rose Court, they seem to be working pretty good with the developer, and hopefully they can iron things out before we give them any type of water tie-ins. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sad. Ms. Grow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Only thing I had tonight was just a reminder for everybody that at Senior Center this Thursday on the 16th, there's going to be a community-wide shredding event, so if you have sensitive documents that you need to shred, they're going to be there from 10:00 AM to noon, so it is an opportunity to safely destroy sensitive paperwork, so come down, and I know I take advantage of that, because it's just the best practice if you have sensitive documents, even if you're, you know, not using them for anything anymore, go ahead, shred them, get rid of them, don't leave them lying around, so, best practice.
Thank you, Ms. Grow. Mr. Plasko.
Thank you. This afternoon, I received, it looks like everyone was on the list to receive, an email from Steve and Tony Esco, involves a lot of concerns and comments around the Norwood Commerce Center, Endicott Street traffic, and people haven't had a chance to read it to read it and to consider it. So with your permission, I'll leave this for another night and not try to have a full discussion of it tonight. But one of the things she brings up is kind of old, and I think we could at least start looking into it, and that is when Endicott Woods was built, the condos, they were given some exemptions from the things they would otherwise do, if I'm saying it correctly, and they agreed to make certain payments. They made a payment, actually, three separate payments to the Housing Authority, which I happen to know have been made. And then there was a payment supposed to go to the town for improvements of the sidewalks, the whole length of Endicott Street. And we seem to have lost track of what's happened to that and whether we can still go after the developer for how that money owed. So I think the information should be somewhere down in the planning department, because I know Mr. Halki Otis was well aware of it and had information on it. So if they can find those files, otherwise, we can do some more homework, but maybe we can find out just where that was. I mean, we may have received the money, and we just don't remember, and it's in a 4453 account for that purpose. We're not spending it. Or we may not have even received the money yet, but we need to track that down, and then if in the end of the day, they don't owe us anything or we can't get it from them, those sidewalks still need to be done. They're terrible.
We'll take a look at it.
Need to get them on the list quickly. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Plasko. Mr. Donnelly.
Oh, just a few things. So I was talking to Ms. Deb Homewood today, so this is in relation to the swap shop. She reports that they are really in need of volunteers to assist at the swap shop on Saturdays in the Winter Street facility. So I'm talking with Ms. Homewood. I told her I would mention this this evening and indicate that anybody who has an interest, they can contact me or Ms. Homewood. If you want to email me your interest at rdonnelly@norwoodma.gov, I'll make sure that Ms. Homewood receives your information. So that's a great activity they're doing every Saturday. I think in the winter time, they're going to once a month opening, but regardless, they're going to be needing volunteers to keep the swap shop going on a volunteer basis. So last night, we had the approval of our FY24 capital plan, which is great. So I think it is timely for the board, perhaps in January, maybe our first January meeting, to focus a little bit on our capital projects coming up, especially what we project to be on the plan for FY25, not for approval, but just to kind of get through what we have on our plate. Capital Outlay, we'll meet sometime in January, and I think I'd like to be prepared to discuss the FY24 plan with the committee if necessary. As your representative on Outlay Committee, that's just helpful to me. So on that note, I just wanted to clarify, at a recent FinCom meeting, I suggested that FinCom send us information on debt service associated with our capital improvement plan, and it was my error, because actually, we already have that information from Mr. Mizuko in terms of debt service planning going forward over the next several years, particularly as it's listed on our five-year forecast, draft five-year forecast. But in conjunction and looking at our FY25 plans for capital, I think it might be helpful for the board to have a discussion on capital improvement funding going forward as it relates to both the financial forecast and our ability to take on projects that are large enough that could require borrowing. I think there's a particular concern there regarding how much borrowing we can do, and I think it's just an opportunity for us to have a good discussion around that. So perhaps January, we could, we could, we could have the discussion. The chief mentioned scams earlier, so this one comes under not so much a scam as it's just social media scam, if you will. Mr. Lane shared with me an inquiry that he received with a attachment that appeared to be a news article that Mr. Lane, as chair, was calling for an emergency meeting of the board of selectmen to, for the board to pass a bylaw outlawing signholding on the Naponton Street Bridge because it was interfering with his commute. Obviously, I read this, and I thought it was something from The Onion. It was so ridiculous, but I have noted that there are actually some activity on social media, making some relatively strange comments that this board is involved with issuing bylaws for a particular activity happening at a particular bridge in Norwood. I would just ask people, if they come across such information, that they vet it a little more carefully. All of our meetings are posted. We have our staff here who are very willing to take inquiries in terms of upcoming meetings in our agenda, as well as all meetings need to be posted publicly on our site, website, as well as the town clerk does a good job posting in and around the Town Hall area. So that's just my advice to folks who are reading fake information on a social media. The place to go to find out what's happening from a meeting perspective is right here. I want to make a shout out to the Norwood High School Alumni Association for wreaths across America, Highland Cemetery decorating the graves of our departed veterans. They are having a fundraiser to, for $20. You can reserve a wreath in your name and redeemed on Saturday, December 20, it's December the 16th at 12:00 noon at the cemetery. So there's information, you can make your check available for $20 to the Norwood High School Alumni Association, care of Jerry Miller, 12 Leighton Road, Norwood, Massachusetts. So again, there's information around about this great activity. I've done it in the past, and we'll do it again this year, but it's just a great activity. You folks, I dropped off a design for the community preservation project application that is due on this Friday for the Morse Hill Veterans Park at the corner of Mylord and Washington. We'll get that application in on Friday, before Friday, for the CPC to consider. I thank the Department of Public Works for all the help they've had in helping us design and work through that process. As part of that process, the, we will include a, we will be reaching out to our neighbors in the Morse Hill area to invite them to a public meeting to take a look at the proposal for designing amenities to the park, scheduling that. Hopefully, I have a date, December the 6th, 7:00 p.m. We're going to have it at the Cokely Middle School cafeteria. We'll meet before then. I'll remind folks about that. But that's just an update to let you know that that particular project is administratively going forward nicely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Mr. Plasko.
Can I comment on Mr. Donnelly's discussion of the social media? That's exactly why I try to stay off of social media. But, you know, we do approve some rules and regulations, but to get technical, they referenced a bylaw. We do not have the authority to adopt bylaws. That's done by town meeting.
Right.
Small follow-up to that. One of the primary motivators for stuff like this, one of the things we've been studying in the scam task force, is that it's used to generate interest because it touches people's emotions, which makes you more likely to take a look and click on things, maybe not take as long to think about it before you click, which then tends to route you to ad-serving sites or malware sites or all sorts. Like, the idea is to sort of provoke your emotion, go, what? So that you want to click.
Yeah.
And you don't want to do that. You want to be careful and methodical when you're looking at stuff online for that very reason.
Well, not for nothing, but I also know Mr. Lane's commute to where he works, and I wouldn't imagine why he needs to go south or 95 through Walpole or Canton to reverse and come up 95 to go under the Naponton Street over, underpass.
Well, I don't get past.
So that's a long commute if he were doing that.
That's how I always go to Jamaica.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Yeah, and on that point too, I know one of our library employees, Keith Umbright, am I pronouncing that? Yeah. They have done really good work with info sessions on misinformation, so maybe having them in to present would be okay. We could talk with Clayton and see. Just a short presentation, reach a wider audience perhaps with the selectmen's meeting, because I do think it's important, like Mr. Donnelly and Mr. Plasko said, that, you know, there are certain things that we can do. There are a lot of things that we can't in terms of calling for meetings or bylaws, and I think that sometimes that gets a little bit muddled. Along the lines, there was some talk of one of the CPA proposals that we approved, not approved, that we supported for a full application having to do with Shattuck Park, and I think online, there was some discussion about what that project entailed and the process, and I won't go into details, but in terms of the process, you know, every application that comes into the CPA on the deadline of next Friday had gone through the pre-application and the full application's due on the 17th. Those all get vetted with public hearings, and then ultimately, if that goes well, goes forward at town meeting. So there will be multiple opportunities for people of the community to ask questions, raise concerns, and ultimately, at that public hearing, that initial public hearing, if there are lots of concerns or, you know, the likelihood that a project would go forward is lessened. Conversely, if people support something, it's always great to go and support projects too. So I just want to, you know, I'm a member of the CPC, but I think that the process works really well, and there's, there will be ample opportunity for people to comment and provide feedback. Mr. Plasko.
What you just referenced in the Shattuck Park is one of the reasons I asked for just a couple of sentences of added clarification in our minutes, but the other reason I brought it forward is you are going to have some neighbors really don't want anything done. I was walking my dog as usual and was verbally accosted by one of the neighbors, quite violently. So they have strong opinions.
Yeah, and we'll make sure they're all get notice of the public hearing, should the applicant submit a full application, which maybe they won't.
Absolutely. And it's important to note, the board's not necessarily signaling its support at this stage of the CPA process. It's a, you may remember when marijuana companies first started coming to towns, towns could issue a letter of non-opposition, which is the most bureaucratic term I've ever heard, but in theory, that's what the board's doing is saying, if the process plays out, town meeting, community preservation, people want to do this, the board's not saying?
For sure.
Absolutely not to this.
Yeah.
But it needs to be clear to the CPC what we voted.
Right.
Because we never actually saw that application. We don't know what's on that, but we did take a position, and we did state fairly clearly, wasn't we?
Right, which should be clear was just feasibility study, which is a process that involves neighbors coming in saying, let's look at different options. I think there was, I did get an email from one resident, I'll respond to, that seemed to think that CPA money goes to the applicants, and it doesn't. It goes for the project. So when we're doing a feasibility study, if Mr. Sad submits an application for feasibility of burying the lines in South Norwood, we don't give Mr. Sad a check for $60,000. It's, we go through a process of hiring a vendor. It's still town money that follows our regular procurement processes.
Yeah. I mean, it's great that people are engaged and they have questions, so we don't want to discourage that.
If I could, just to build on that as well, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, just having gone through the CPC review process as well, I know it's specifically called out in the application that the committee will review is efforts made by the applicant to engage the public and particularly the neighborhoods impacted by these proposals through information sessions or whatever. So your committee, you're on the committee, I know that you take that into great consideration for any application going forward. But the process also requires that in January, I believe, is when the CPC actually has their opportunity to have review and then put forward these recommendations. They have a vote, which is an opportunity, again, for residents who oppose the projects could submit information or so forth to the committee. But even with that, there, before we go for approval, final, it requires town meeting approval in the spring meeting because these are fiscal year '25 programs, and before they go to the town meeting, they have to come before us for approval to get on the warrant. So there are a number of steps in this, in this process for residents to have input in terms of what's going forward in that the town meeting that occurs in May of next year.
Thank you. Just the last thing I'll add. Again, town meeting night two, Thursday at 7:30, not 6:30 p.m. I know notices have probably gone out, but to anyone that maybe left last night a little early, we're starting an hour later. Hopefully, we will finish in one evening. And Mr. Mizuko, thank you again to your staff that were available, not only to be there if questions came up, but also to present to the slides and, you know, everything that goes into it. So I know it's a lot of work, and so thank you to your staff.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Seconded.
Made by Mr. Sad, seconded by Mr. Donnelly. All those in favor? Chair votes aye unanimous. Good night.